Everyone, I'd like to call to order the special inaugural meeting 2021, our first back in person. So apologies for the six minute delay to start as we try to figure out the zooming and in-person hybrid meeting. Thanks for coming this evening as well. The first item up is the agenda review. We do have this available on board docs and for people zooming in online. And we, the agenda grew over the course of the week and a half that we first thought that we would need this. So if any board members or administrators think there's a need to add at least.
Yeah, I just had a quick addition. I'm taking advantage of the fact that Dr. Stein is here and wondering if she can repeat an update on what's going on for the opening of schools for the first two weeks, which she gave at the Dresden meeting last time, just because I feel like we have a different audience for this meeting than that. Not that you can't take it, I'm trying to give somebody this.
That's not the expert's speed. But any other additions, edits? Moving around, okay, then we'll, we'll add that if it's all right. Maybe we could actually, maybe it would make sense to start off with that. Or do you need some prep?
Oh, no, I'm fine. I'm prepared.
All right.
I was prepared for it anyway.
Well, we do have a public comment next on our agenda. I mean, that is for anyone that's not on the agenda. I think I know why we all hit the pre-K and upgrade times.
Yes.
Okay, great. So we, I'll have a public comment section at crap point in time too. So let's get the.
Open update.
Post-COVID.
Okay, that's right. We have changed our meeting now to, we've reverted from the COVID committee now to the pandemic response committee. And we're going to meet on an as-meeting basis. So we met recently just to talk about reopening of school. And we have determined that we should reopen for the first two weeks, at least with everyone wearing masks, like we did last year. We want to see how it is making the transition. And we know that things are changing pretty rapidly right now with the Delta variant. And so we will continue to look at the guidance that we have examined in the past, all the local and state rates, vaccination rates, COVID data related to infection rates and things like that. So we are going to meet actually once we return to school after the first week. And then we'll look at the kinds that's out of that time. And we'll make any decisions about whether we might need to change things. But we're leaving many of the protocols in place on the buses. Masks will be required. For, you know, the near future, they're required on public transportation generally. So that will remain in place. We are getting rid of some of the in-school protocols, like, you know, going through the list and making sure temperatures are taken and things like that. We're asking parents and students to do that at home and to do self-checks and to stay home. We're going to stress that over and over to stay home when feeling any of those symptoms. And 24 hours after fever has decided, things like that. We'll continue with cleaning protocols. We're moving from six feet of distance to three feet when possible. Because again, we're just basing on the research and the data that's out there from scientists and the most updated protocols. So we'll continue to look at that guidance. And I think that's all of the big things that you're probably interested in. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I've been getting emails here and there. We are going to put the guidance out on the website. I talked today about sending something out to everyone so they know where it will be when we return to school.
All clear on the question?
I just have a quick one. I saw something floating around on the internet that, that there's a rumor that cloth masks are no longer sufficient, that everyone needs to have a N95 mask. And I was pretty sure that wasn't true, but I just thought that might be good to state publicly that a cloth mask is acceptable for the first two weeks of school.
Yes, yeah. And we did put that specifically in the, I did a little pandemic framework. I tried to just do more of an outline this year. We'll have a longer, although shortened, it's about 10 or 11 page overview of all the requirements. But I thought this would be a nice little framework, easy to see. You can see all the different aspects. But we did mention cloth and N95 masks, all of those are acceptable. Great, thank you. So.
Thanks. So my question's related to the age differences in the schools here and how that's going to.
Yeah.
Out. So I understand that you're going to send out this email across the community. Will we be able to time it such that each of the schools principals can follow up immediately? Because I know, you know, probably the race problem in CS is going to assume to be a bit different.
Yeah.
Given that none of our children have the opportunity to be vaccinated. And our masks is signed by someone about half to three quarters and even higher dangerousness.
Right. And we're looking at about a 70% vaccination rate. We're reflecting data right now from each of the schools related to vaccination rates. So, you know, that could potentially occur if we want to start thinking about masks in some schools where there are low vaccination rates, like the elementary schools and going without masks in some schools that have high vaccination rates. Like even the middle school with six. Be vaccinated, they would still probably meet the threshold of seven. Possibility. So, so we will look at that down, you know, as we move into the school year and see how things progress.
Great. Yeah. You know, if there, if there can be times that's with the principals follow up with the school.
Yeah. And the principals are on, they all serve on the committee. So they have up-to-date information as well. And I send out all the meeting minutes, even if people can't attend immediately following, so.
Other questions? All right. Thanks for the.
You're welcome. No problem.
So we'll move down our list here, agenda items. And next up is the pre-K class update. And I'll be back trying, you know, if you want to talk about other.
I'm going to give a pre-K and the K update. So pre-K right now, Mr. Baghdad was in today and made some calls. So we have 18 students signed up for our preschool program. We have 11 on the waitlist. Had 18 on the waitlist, so we found other places. Kindergarten, we just reached our 42nd student today. So I think we need to think about spilling that in this three. And other than that, we continue to trickle in. We've got a sixth grader today, third grader yesterday. So I think by the time school starts, we'll be at full capacity, which is great.
Questions for Sean? And these numbers in the pre-K, are you comfortable with that?
But I talked with our pre-K teacher. We have, right now, we're starting to have a preschool teacher and an assistant in pre-K. It falls within the guidelines of state regulations. I'm comfortable with it. I know there are some families that are not comfortable with it. If you want to, we could look at putting some other head system help in the classroom. I personally think that they will be fine. I think we have a talented teacher, a great head assistant, they have a good setup. I'm not concerned, but I think it's also important to the way the concerns of families that trust us with their kids. I could go either way. I feel comfortable with the way it is. I'm just as comfortable to give a little extra support and. It comes to be maybe December, we decide that support isn't needed to change that.
Sean, would it make sense to start with, with the two adults in the room and then see what the needs are and how things progress? Knowing that we can add the person if we need to, because women have, we then have a sort of a hole to fill if we make that shift.
Yeah, so right now we're not fully staffed with head assistants. So moving, and I don't know if we will be fully staffed by the beginning of the year, we're not getting applicants to fill the positions. So moving that will take from another area needing the school. I could go either way. I think starting with a little more support could be okay and, and then back off. Again, I'm comfortable with it the way it is. I'd recommend it if I wasn't comfortable with, with the numbers.
Were there questions?
Well, the only question I have is, you know, around the agenda. I'm sure we're talking about that full versus half day. Is that correct? I can wait until that becomes part of the discussion, but that's my question. I didn't know what the concerns were and what the pros and cons were in your opinion of full versus half day.
Okay, so we, our program is a full-day program. We changed it. The issue that we're having is that when families signed up for it, we had to make a decision to go full day. So we have some families who signed up for our half-day program and then found out that we were going to be full day. Some people were divided through that and other people were not as, as thrilled. So we have, that's the issue, I think, part of it. That we have to deal is that who would prefer to have a half-day program, which we don't have. Our, our full-day program is full day. The way it's working out, we want to have a student leave half day. That's part of another layer of this issue.
Would you?
So would an option be parent withdraw if they're in the, the accepted eighteen? And another family accepting in who prefers full day? Is that something, do we have that flexibility right now? Or are we too, too close to the school start?
We always have that flexibility. I think part of the trouble is people finding that half-day piece that there's just not a lot of availability in this area. So I think there's some families that are feeling stuck, that they, they prefer a half-day program. They signed up, but it was a half-day program. Now it's full day and the half-day programs in the area are full. I, I wish that we could have a little more communication because I feel like probably there are people that are in those half-day programs that would come to a full day. But I can't post.
Do you have a question? Yeah, two, and going back to the first part of the conversation. So the, the, the ratio issue, the, so the ratios are, the minimum ratio is set by the state. Either, and here's why I get confused sometimes because of the changes that we get, either the DCF or Department of Ed.
DCF oversees preschool.
Okay. The, and then help me out here because I believe the ratios would be different depending on the age groups of the kids. Right? So as the kids get, get older, the ratio is not as, well, it's lower, higher, not having a little ratios, right? And so for the age group, we're talking about three fours, the nine-one ratio is set by the state through, I would assume, to be some sort of you know, objective analysis that they've looked at to determine that that's the appropriate ratio for that age group of kids. Right?
Yes, and there's a different ratio for first. So if we had a first to five-year-old program, the numbers would be lower. Right? Because we have a three and four-year-old program and the numbers are a little higher.
Right. And for those folks that were concerned about the ratio that we had, were they comparing that against? What, I guess, what was there a comparison? Or did they just think that that nine-one, that it's established by the state was inappropriate? Okay. Because I would be worried that if it, if it was based off of a comparison of other, you know, childcare facilities, for example, like childcare center in Norwich, right? That you need to make sure that you're, you know, compared to the right age range of kids. Not the, you know, the, the birth to, to, but the, the older age range of kids. And now I'm forgetting my second question. Well, I think, I think yes, to clarify too, it's a maximum ratio. It's a 10 to one, except that it's stated as I understand, is that right? Okay, so even a nine-one work. Okay.
And I will say that part of the eighteen was looking at the ages of kids. Most of the kids coming to our preschool are in that four-year-old range. There are very few three-year-olds. And, and a number of them on your last year, but they'll, they'll, they'll transition.
You can do your own question. Yeah. And we can come back to it because I know we have some other questions or comments. Yeah. Other issue board or administration? Now it's time for public comment. So if anyone would like to talk, just raise your hand and, oh yeah. Okay, so then, now we just ask if you, is your name and where?
Okay, my name's Nate Robbins. I live just over here on Elm Street. We moved from Hanover last year. We've been near five years and I have one daughter who was in pre-K is here and is going to kindergarten class next year. Then another daughter who will enter pre-K. And so just before elementary age. And we are one of the families that we were delayed or the, we moved here for the school. We were already living in Hanover, I used to play basketball. Mr. Bill all the time, he was loving the area. And our daughter, wonderful experience in pre-K. And we signed up, we actually didn't know about the plans for the all-day pre-K at all when we signed up. And by the time we found out, unfortunately, all the other preschools in the area were completely full. So we're on several waiting lists, or the three-year-olds. She's, she's a young three-year-old. So we are concerned about all day, every day. Like that might be too much for her. And it's really more, we were hoping there would be some accommodation about, because I, I think the Tepsley Rite is a wonderful, we really believe in early childhood. It's a wonderful thing for the community, this pre-K. But I think a lot of the people who need it are enrolled elsewhere. Because they weren't aware there would be an all-day program. And if both parents were, they kind of signed up, you know, at the time it was offered. And so we were hoping there would be some accommodation for people in our situation or in that situation who may be on the waiting list. Whether it would be arranging for some kind of switch. Because if we were to, if we couldn't get in anywhere else. And we, we are the back of those, we have, so there's no way to really switch. Or related to the class size also, which I guess is a little concerning. They're quite, they're young. And I guess it's the minimum set by the state, but we also, Marion Cross is, you know, kind of known for small class sizes. So minimum set by the state isn't necessarily what we expect. But I guess we're hoping for a solution potentially with more teachers. There could be two classes with a half-day program. In addition to full day to accommodate everybody. Or some exchange somehow that will facilitate people who want to be in the full day who can, and that's personal.
Thank you. Other?
My name's John, live just on the other side of Norbiton. John Hampton. I have a kid, one is just going to first grade, one will be pre-K, who is also three. And my, I think the benchmarking into local ratios of local schools, I think is a great idea. I don't know if that's been done officially. I have a sense of a number of schools here that does have a lower ratio. Obviously, this is a different population, it's different. There are obviously a number of variables in that, but I think that would be a good exercise to pursue. My concern is around the ratio centered because some of the children will maybe not be toilet trained. And three-year-olds have tantrums and given, you've had exposure to both. Both the teachers in the room were both wonderful, that there's concern that if one gets taken, it becomes, at that age group, one tantrum, one accident, one teacher gets taken away, and then all of a sudden it's one on seventeen very quickly. And that is a, it will dramatically limit the type of program that can be run in a class. Because, you know, they may not be able to go into the forest as much. They may not be, there may not be as much as they could try to do, given the ratio that they do have. And I think that, you know, that really limits the potential of the program. So I think that, I think there, there are a number of parents with the goal of either, whether it be adding a second class for the one half-day and full day, or adding a third teacher to the current class, given one on seventeen does this. I don't think that's a good student experience and I certainly don't think it's a very good faculty experience either. But I also was saying what Nate was saying, that we are, I think as a community, we're so grateful for a pre-K program and everyone values investing in early childhood education. This is a great opportunity. So we are excited about this and I think the community wholeheartedly supported. A two to, two to eighteen is a, I think is a very tough pill for faculty and families and students.
I'm Stephanie Cashman. We just recently moved here last spring. And our daughter was in the pre-K program when we moved. And she'll now be going in as a four-year-old to the pre-K program. And I don't want to be like redundant. I basically would echo what these guys are saying. We maybe would have explored other options, which we can't really. By the time we learned of it being a full-day program. Everywhere, everywhere was completely full. And I, you know, I don't know, my daughter might transition, okay, she's four, she was here last year. But it was just too late to, to afford any option for us. And then again, the same thing with the ratio. I agree, like with, given the age group, I mean, there are tantrums, there are, you know, kids have to go to the bathroom. Like, things are going to come up on probably like a, you know, hourly basis like that, where it will pull attention from one and the other teacher is going to be left with 18 little kids. And so, or I look at it more like a pre-K program and not like daycare. You know, I, the ratio is a little bit concerning, but right now, I think we're just kind of at the mercy of what the school is willing to do. Because like I said, like, we also don't really have an option to go anywhere else. So again, just kind of echoing these guys' kind of concerns, so.
Well, this is on the agenda tonight, this is a discussion, not a decision action. So we wanted to give the board the opportunity to hear and the administration as well. I, I'll take some blame here because I think I expressed to Nate some of the background of this program, which is on three years' hold. Which we, we were addressing a need early on, started off as a half-day program. And actually, two years ago, we had about 15 parents in here asking for a full-day program. So we adjusted our understanding of need and actually, and talking about that in August of last year, when we began a budget process to figure out whether we wanted to put more resources into making it happen. So that it could be a full-day program with the understanding that it was going to be addressing more need. Obviously with 11 children on the list, that's needs out there. Neil sits as a school board representative on the childcare committee, which is also trying to address some of these or get to the bottom of some of the issues that our communities is seeing right now. With that said, I, I don't personally see the ability to go to a half-day program, given the, what we've gone to get us to a full-day program in just three years' time. I hear what you're saying about the ratios too, and what Sean was saying as well. And, and Jay suggested with starting off the year and seeing how things go and, and understanding that nothing can happen. This is also a school that can draw from other classrooms, should it, even though, as my understanding here. And someone else could support that as well. But I did want to give everybody the opportunity to hear this. Sorry. I was going to just offer to Sean, it does seem to make sense to me that if there, if there's a sort of pent-up demand among the other providers for full day. Maybe the SAU could help you if, if we, if it was a matter of having someone reach out to the directors of the various sites to put it out to some of the families that if anyone is interested in full-time, we could maybe do swap. Maybe it might be a way to help alleviate some of the problems that some of the families are having by being forced to do full day. I, I, I'm not going to volunteer to make the call on the phone, but, but I could, I could certainly see if I can get Ryan or somebody to help make those calls. We wouldn't call individual families, we'd just call the directors and have them manage that communication. I think that would like, there's improved. It's like exploring. With that said, and having heard the concerns about the ratios too. Our, our next meeting is not until August 19th. We may have the first special meeting in between. It'll be December, I just, I've heard about as well. So I, I mean, like I said, it's not a decision. I'm very thankful for coming and giving us feedback on the thoughts of it right now. Maybe we should have more of a discussion to understand what they want to think with that case. I mean, as of now, it seems that you're kind of going into the year, we could adjust quickly. Our board members concerned and want to bring this up at some other meeting to address.
Yeah, and it's, it's hard to tell, I was searching on the, to look at the, the daycare center and the Norbiton School. And it, it doesn't have the ratio listed. It just says that the Norbiton School has three teachers and the daycare center has two, for this age group. But it doesn't say how many are in the classroom. So there's no way to know just from what's on the website, what's there.
Well, that's a bit of a difficult comparison to.
Yeah. Right, exactly. It's a different thing, but.
It's not agency of education, but more of.
More private, right. I know it's not apples and oranges, but it is sort of what people are shopping and what they're comparing for. And then I, I guess I, I heard you say that having like the kids that need to leave at new leave doesn't work with what is being offered. Like kind of what Bree's doing with REST. Like kids can do half-day or full day and it's the same set of counselors and people come and go. And I know that this is completely different than a REST center camp, but it just sounds as if there's no flexibility there. Is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, I don't want to jump in for Sean, but I mean, the, the, the issue for me, right, is that two years ago, we were sitting in this room. We had a whole bunch of people saying, we want a full-day program. So this body, right, this group reacted to that. I mean, there was a real palpable need in the community for that sort of thing. Because what we were finding at the time was is that the, the subsidy that was available for these parents for this care, we were, we were missing a whole swath of the population who really desperately needed this care and couldn't afford it. Right? And that's one of the reasons why the state then came up with this $3,000 subsidy, right? And so between that and, and the people that were in the room at the time, right? There was a real, and I think there still is, a real need for full-day care for this age group. And it doesn't discount the fact that we have some groups of folks that are looking for another option, right? I'm not discounting that. But, you know, to think that, that I want to go back to Sean and say, whoa, 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 let's reverse course. What do I, what do I tell those other parents who are already here saying, we need this?
Right, no, I, I wasn't asking that. I just wondered if there could, if you could have like kids peel off halfway through and the kids that wanted to stay. It sounds as if that's pedagogically not possible. I also stand, understand that we're meeting this need for full day. And I'm also kind of cognizant of the fact that when people were first signing up, they thought they were signing up for half-day. So it, it's complicated and I've just been trying to hear, you know, what can be flexed and what can't be flexed. And it sounds as if we can't flex and let people leave halfway through the day, so.
Well, it's not. Sure, sure. Do you want to talk to the first of the directors? Well, only because there's, there's some history to this too, right? So at the time that we originally started doing this and we did the half-day program, I think that there are a lot of people that felt that that was good, but it wasn't ideal. We felt like we were cramming a lot of stuff into a very short period of time. And one of the things that we talked about in this group and the prior principal and even Sean when we came in, right, was the idea that a full-day program gives them the ability to take what felt like was really being squished into a really small amount of time. And then just allowing the program to breathe a little bit, to have those kids have an experience that didn't feel like that they were just constantly being pushed through a program quickly. And so the benefit of the full-day program is an academic benefit.
Yeah, again, I'm not arguing against that. I'm just trying to deal with the people we have in front of us, so.
So, and speaking from my perspective here too, is I, we've seen a need for that program. I will take the blame, uh, better communicating in the budget process. So we're going to do a full-day program. I don't think we can go back unfortunately at this point to. We also have issues of, I mean, through the second half, we don't have the capacity, the size of that building at this point. Especially the, and some of the other are very long here. So I, I don't, I don't see that as an option. Some of the other are very long here. So I, I don't uh, I don't see that as an option.
So I think one of the things I can bring to mind to do this is to talk to Chesley again and see what. What it would look like if one or two of our kids left early. Uh, we did. The hesitancy is that we did design a program that spreads the day out.
Right.
Academic to the whole entire day. So. Part of leaving party changes it from a pre-K program to a daycare program for the kids we missed a chunk of time. But I'm really feeling poorly about the families who signed up expecting one day. And that's not their fault that they. That happened. So, let me see if we can do some flexing and work a little bit. Let me also look at staffing and see if there is potential. Chesley feels the need to have a third person.
Jane, you're. Do, you don't have to put me on the spot. Sorry. Um, do we have a sense of. The numbers for who is seeking half-day and who is seeking full-day of, of. Not just the people enrolling, but also the people unaware of us.
So the waitlist, Brad called today to follow up on a few that we had. Didn't have current information. So the eleven who are on the waitlist. Ten of them would be delighted for the full-day program. One could go either way. Could be, could accommodate half-day, could accommodate full-day.
And what about the enroll?
Enrolled, I think there was three who would prefer a half-day program.
Thank you.
So.
Can I still ask something as, as I would have closed?
I will.
Okay, sorry. Um, just since my first meeting, don't know the full procedure here. Is there anything, just since we have an engaged community on this topic? Uh, is there anything we can do? I mean, is it space constraint? Is it hiring constraint? Is it budgetary constraints? Is something about adding a third? Teacher? Is there, there's maybe that's not something we discuss here, but I'm just new. So like, is there something in the community who can help to. Solve whatever those problems, challenges maybe?
Well, those are all our constraints that we can suggest. Normally, they didn't address during the budget season, and which is why I've uh said I, I should have been better communicating our process. I guess last year we didn't have a process. Because that's, we were discussing from August on, we were going to go from uh half to fully, given what we had already in the community. At that time, and we, so that did address the, the need for more teachers. So we bumped up Chesley's uh time from half to full-time and uh. And, and the program too, the one program from fourteen to eighteen. So um, that, that was. This is always a challenge when you, you have more demand than we have space and, and funds for after we settle the budgetary system. That's the conundrum we found ourselves in right now. But so with, with that said, um. Engaged in the upcoming year in the budget process too is a, is a good way to do it. Um, but what you're doing right now is. The other way to engage during the, during this floor here. Um, with that said, okay.
Just to address that on a different level, my biggest hesitancy in. This, this manager that's working here is not about the financial pieces of that third person. It's about where that person's going to come from, the building and the needs of another corporation that it just shifts it. I think we probably. Could afford a third person to help in there. Money-wise, I'm just worried about kid-wise. That's gonna, that'll have an impact on other student or students. So one of the things you could do is we could recruit for us. We need people to come in and have assistant positions here and be more tools. So if you could find people that are interested, send them my way. Good.
Yeah. Uh, now, right after what Sean just said, I am a workhorse, not a piece of. And there's, there's a, there's a bigger picture here for this. So two things, like, so you guys asked, so what can you do to get engaged? Come to these meetings or at least watch them online and tell all your friends about them too, because um, you know. Rightly run that, like, this is sort of where the decisions get made. And we've been talking about this now for going on three years, right? So I understand it may be new for you guys because you're out of the loop. Um, but these discussions have been going on for a while. So I would let all of your friends know, like. This is the body. These are the discussions that, you know, result in these things. The second thing, right, if you guys aren't aware of this, we are standing potentially on a precipice. Of a monumental change in the tax rate here in Norwich due to a thing called the waiting study. Um, and these guys get kind of sick and tired of me like complaining about this, but I will tell it to you guys right now. This really matters, right? So there is a task force that was established by the legislature in this last session. It's looking right now. Implementation of this thing called the waiting study. The way that your property taxes are calculated is based on the amount of education spending per pupil. Those pupils can vary. So they're the, the pupils are the denominator in the formula, right? And they're weighted. So certain types of pupils are weighted more and certain types are weighted less depending on certain characteristics relating to what you think it costs to educate those types of kids. Kids that come from higher poverty are weighted higher. Kids that are English language learners are rated higher. Kids that have come from. A rural area are weighted higher. All three of those things, we don't have very much of here in Norwich. The end result is that we are looking at a potentially fifty-two cent tax rate increase here in Norwich. For a house that runs about four hundred thousand dollars, I think you're looking like a two thousand dollar tax rate increase if this were to go into effect. So when Sean or anybody else talks about adding more bodies to the program. Close to sixty-six percent of our budget is personnel costs, right? And so if we're gonna add more bodies in here, I'm looking at the tax rate going up and up and up. And people like you guys who just moved to the area might not have been able to do that if you looked at what the tax rate was gonna be for the house that you just bought, right? So that stuff worries me big time because that's gonna be a huge shock for a lot of families in this town if it comes to pass. And so when we start talking about, um, you know, what programs are we gonna add? How many more teachers are we gonna add? Are we gonna add another kindergarten teacher? Are we gonna add another teacher for the, the pre-K program? Like, that matters. It really matters a lot. And so we need to be very careful about the decisions that we make now. Especially if we start adding before that rate increase comes to us, we're gonna make the cliff even higher. Right? And so those are the things that, that worry me. And I want to make sure that this town is affordable for everyone that lives here, not just for some folks. So. Thank you.
All right. So you've taken the final, I guess. So do you want, why don't we just stay in communication and if there's any for follow-up, then we can determine that.
Okay. Uh, one final thing. I will also bring this discussion forward to the childcare committee. Just to make sure that they're in the loop of the stuff going on here too.
Well, then that's a good point too. So all of all, do, is the childcare community committee in direct contact on a regular basis with the. And are they participating in local nursery schools?
Yes. So we just completed a survey. So we did two surveys. One was a parent survey to determine what the need was on the parenting of change. And the other one was provider survey. To determine what the supply was, um, to see where the two either meet or don't meet. Um, I think that they're trying to uh collect those results right now to get a bigger picture feel of things, but. Um, you know, this type of discussion of people, you know, we moved to a full-day program in Mary Cross, but there were some folks that. Would prefer a half-day program. I think that that ought to be added into the discussion as well too, so that. You know, hopefully we've got a more well-rounded picture of the needs and the supply here in the upper valley.
One of the surveys that just went to Norwich.
Correct. Yeah. But, but well, providers, providers included folks both on this side of the river and on the other side of the river. Yeah, so it wasn't focused just on Norwich. All right.
All right. So, so that's another way of reaching out and addressing the needs, especially in early education. All right. So I guess we've both got our marching orders. Thank you for being touched and for participating. And uh, and we do have two attendees. I don't know.
Tom, I'm hoping that you, you're the host, right?
Yes.
So if anybody wanted to speak, they could raise their hand and you could promote them to speaker.
I, I'm a veteran, just allow them to talk and they would come through the AlCam here.
So now is the time for anyone who's joined, two people who have joined us as uh participants, if you'd like to speak, raise your Zoom hand and be happy to call on. And not seeing the interaction, we'll uh move on down the agenda. But thank you again for, I'm Sean for uh your work on this as well, obviously. So. We're trying to meet the need uh slowly, but uh, there's always uh more, obviously, that uh. As we're finding out. All right. Thank you again. With that, let's move on down our agenda here to, we have an update. Just an update at this point in time on the MOU for the educational use of North Frye Forest as we have some. Needs up there in terms of uh doing some. Maintenance, construction work and uh.
Training.
Yes, so.
Okay, sure, I can do this. It's quick to.
Jane, please.
Yeah, never know what's jumping. Um. So we met, I don't know who to look at, the owl or you. It's a whole new world, isn't it? And how appropriate that it's an owl, right?
I know, and it's awesome. Yeah.
Isn't that awesome? Okay, so anyway, Sean, uh, myself and Tony Daigle, along with Matt Zuerz. Um, from the maintenance department for the school districts, uh, met and walked through. Uh, a section of the North Frye Forest that we use for educational purposes. Um, as many folks know, we entered into a memorandum of uh understanding with the town of Norwich. Um, we've had an ongoing one for many years. It changed a little bit a couple of years ago. Because we discussed, uh, you know, why are we paying each other back and forth when all the monies are raised from the same taxes? So we had the conversation about doing a, a swap, if you will, for services and usage. Um, then COVID came, and so our swap is probably better than theirs because they didn't really use the building much. Um. But we're in a new world now after, well, shortly thereafter. And so. Um, we're wanting to expand operations into the forest and/or make it ADA compliant. For everyone to be able to um have expanded use. Uh, so we met. After that, then some other meetings, and we received a quote from the Upper Valley. Upper, you, Upper Valley Trails Alliance, right? Okay. They also do work on our Dresden Fields property. Uh, so Tony Daigle is familiar with them. Um, and so we received a quote from them with many different alternatives ranged from. Twenty-four thousand up to about fifty-eight thousand dollars to bring all of the trail system out here into ADA compliant. Um, so we then went back to the drawing board because, you know, we don't have that kind of money budgeted, nor do we have it available to us right away. Um, the town, Leah, um, Bree, who's the recreation director. Um, she had thought that perhaps we could discuss how that might work into a new MOU whereby. Uh, the town of Norwich would take that on under some of their various commissions and committees. Um, and in lieu of us letting them use the building for some of their programs. So kind of a similar swap. That we were doing, but we take back the um, the maintenance of our fields. Okay, so that's where we're at. So we followed up with Bree, um, and we have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday. Uh, with the gentleman from Upper Valley Trails Alliance, I think that's what it's called. I'm sorry, I apologize. I forgot that wrong. Um, for next Tuesday, and we're gonna go out and discuss doing it in a phased project. So two phases. First phase, in order to get us from the parking lot areas to the early, earlier childhood educational sections. Um, and then for next summer, to expand that into the other locations through the rest of the forest. Um, and to discuss how we might be able to do that. Um, between the town and the school district and what that might look like. And then bring you. Forward, hopefully at the next meeting, um, you know, a better. Not a better plan, but a more solid plan for moving forward.
And when you say next, I mean, that can wait till the August nineteenth now or the November?
Yeah, I think it can. And if it can't, then what we would um ask maybe to do is to piggyback it on the. SAU board meeting, which is August tenth.
And, and this improves. So if we were to decide that the August nineteenth meeting, obviously there's a need to. Funds to be able to do this work, could that be done in the timeframe between August nineteenth and the first day of August thirtieth?
I don't have the answer for that right now. And if we were to do it as a swap for space. For services, then it wouldn't be the school district, um, you know, approving of funds. It would be the town. The town would be approving of funds to embark on that um project. And so it would be a different swap with us.
But the, the project is one that we would need to have done before school starts, is that correct?
Or at least well underway.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be ready by August.
My, my assumption, and that's always um can be dangerous, but my assumption through the email streams that I've had. Uh, is that they could perhaps get that section that's most critical done in a pretty quick timeframe. But I'll know more after next Tuesday.
All right. Well, then, let me know if we need to tell them until August tenth.
Sure, I will because I'm assuming most everybody here will be there.
You're assuming.
Yes. Um, is, is some of this work related to ADA compliance?
Most all of it is.
Most all of it is. Or, and there are no federal dollars available for something like that?
There may be, Neil, and uh, federal and your private. And so I want to pursue some of those conversations as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
With that question, does it matter though if it's coming from the town or the school districts?
No. It's probably easier if it comes from the town because I believe at this point, in my knowledge of what's going on at the New Hampshire state level. That there are more monies actually coming into uh towns than there are. For those types of projects in the towns than there are in the school districts. And we don't own the land. So it would need to be the town. If, if it was product funding, it could be both of us.
Would you like to follow up?
I, I just have a question. I want to test my assumption of reading back and forth. It appears that this phased plan with taking care of the, the immediate preschool area or the, like, the early childhood area. The pre-K one area meets the needs of the students that we currently have in this building. Like, we're not gonna have to. Like, there's not a fourth or a fifth grader out there that needs further accommodations right now. I just, I'm worried. I'd like the idea of the face. For all sorts of reasons. And I just, my assumption is that. We will still be meeting the needs of the students if we do it that way. And I just want to test that that is true.
Yeah, as of right now.
Okay.
Since we're enrolled.
Okay. Right. And I recognize that could change tomorrow. Yeah, okay.
Other questions? All right. Any questions to call? Any questions from the Zoom audience? Okay, see you then. Thank you for the update, Jane and Sean. And do keep me apprised of what we need to. All right. And thanks to Bree and Tom. So next up is, if we keep it with Jane here, I have the tech project.
Okay. Okay, right. I'm prepared for this too. Hold on. I did this so long ago. Um, okay, so back to the technology project. Um, we met the other districts. Justin and Hanover met last Wednesday, like the time first. Um. As we've gotten more information in on the technology project costs, which were, um, which were great. Because they came in lower than we actually projected and expected. Um, and while we have permission from the uh Norwich town residents to embark on. Um, funding that via a loan uh proceed. Um, which I've also attached the uh two quotes that we've got in off of the proposal for bids for financing. Um, we at Norwich are sitting on. Um, enough money in our building reserve fund to fund this project. Uh, from a withdrawal from that fund, to fund it, you know, in total. Okay? I have for the school board also attached under the executive section here. Um, some other. um, some other information, financial information, which I will share with the public at the next meeting, okay? Um, but it gives you folks an idea of the fact of where we may, depending on a couple, um, items that I don't have confirmation on yet. Uh, that, that, um, the question that came up at Hanover and I was trying to pre-get ahead of, um, was, well, if we deplete, because at Hanover they have about the same amount of money in reserve and they're pulling out about the same. So it's not gonna leave a lot of money left over for rainy day emergency situations, okay? However, the question that was asked there was, is this going to be detrimental to our operations? Did I feel that that would be detrimental? Um, I'll say to you the same thing I said to them. While I don't have a crystal ball, um, I don't believe this would be detrimental to operations. Um, we have fund balance that is available, um, if we have an emergency situation. We're in really pretty good, not going to lose building shape here. Um, we also have three units, which we took off the roof when we got our grants to do the HDAC update, that are gonna be sold here shortly, okay? So, um, you know, those proceeds, we could, you know, do something with as well. So I don't feel it's a risk to do this. I think it's fiscally prudent to save ourselves money, um, on financing a project when we know in the next two or three years, we're, or maybe sooner, um, that we're gonna be looking at a larger extended project, uh, which will include, um, doing something probably with our septic system along with potentially, you know, a more strategic well-thought-out plan about, you know, pickup, drop-off, playgrounds, the whole nine yards. I mean, we've been having these conversations, and so if we're gonna go out and look at a loan for, you know, a septic system, um, then it might be, depending on what occurs at the town in Norwich, and we'll be discussing that at the next meeting, not this one. Um, you know, it will be prudent to not have other debt at that point. And the other debt that we're carrying right now will be done in two years. It would be essentially debt. So that's my recommendation.
Okay, um, just a couple of questions, and so you list it still as potential E-rate refund, when are we gonna know whether or not we do that?
Um, so Josh Malloy, our tech director, is in contact with the other Josh, who's our E-rate consultant, I can't think of Chisholm, I think it's, I think. Um, and everything's been filed. The good news is all of Norwich's documents are correct and in place. Couple hip hops with some other documents on the Hampshire side. Uh, so they're all in and being reviewed right now. Um, so we're hoping to hear soon, because there's no glitches with the Norwich documentation. Uh, the projects are not complete yet. In fact, I don't think we've kicked off cable in here yet. We've kicked off fire system, bathroom, carpet, some other projects here. The cable and project hasn't kicked off here yet. Um, they're finishing up the larger two, all of Dresden first. Um, so I, I think we can, actually, he may have sent the building for the equipment, because that's what we're, we're trying to get the rebate on is the actual equipment cost. And we have the equipment on site, so. So, maybe up to two years, so.
And I, I should have, I think it was like, do you recall where, what we have in reserve on right now?
Um, I do. Did I not put it in yet?
You may have.
No, I may not have. I want. Yeah, so I didn't, I'm sorry. Uh, I believe it's from the last audit, I think it's a hundred and fifty-seven-ish, maybe one fifty-two, one fifty-seven, it's right in there.
So we would.
Yeah, we'd be leaving about ten grand on.
But as you said.
I don't think it's a risk, not currently. If it is, I guess we won't be here.
Okay, um, any questions?
So to be clear, that's coming up for a, uh, there'll be a, the proposal is that we actually do that rather than borrowing.
I have five.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and if for some chance you vote no on that, then I'll come back to the next meeting and ask you to finance it.
And the rates for, can you say?
Twenty, yeah, I've listed.
I saw, listed.
Yeah, two point five, if you go five years with Manscoda, and I would suggest that you are going to do it, that you would do that. Dresden School District wanted that option. Um, and Dresden chose to use some operational balance of funds over what was promised back to the taxpayers against the assessments, um, because we ended up with such a surplus in Dresden. So they were using a portion of operational surplus to, to buy down that debt. Four hundred and the financing, four fifty instead of six hundred.
I don't know if you wanna save this for that by discussion, but I'm just curious then to think, like, did we anticipate that we might have been using any of those funds for the septic?
Not with the recent, are you asking that?
Yeah.
Not with the recent discussions that I've had with the, um, and I didn't bring my septic, um, bag of trips with me. I don't think, um, loans are available through the USDA for school districts for these types of projects. And they're very aggressive in their rates, and they let you go up fifty years on projects of this magnitude. Okay, so.
And it takes ten years for a septic system to fail.
I know, right? Um, so, you know, no, it's right. So when they're conventional, right, um, we're looking at some alternatives, but, um, right. So, so I, I don't think we were unless maybe we would use a portion of it for engineering costs. You know, for engineering costs.
I mean, so I guess there's an option, right, where, um, we could fund some of it through the reserve funds, not all of it, right, and then finance the rest of it if we think that it makes sense to save some of those monies for, for engineering studies, but I'm guessing, reading between the lines, what I'm hearing is not really.
I mean, you can, you could adjust the motion when we get to it, if you wanted to.
Uh, it, well, not, I would, I guess what I'm hearing is the, the, the need, the, the idea that we might be getting those funds for some sort of engineering or other related cost for the septic.
Not in the near, not in the next year. I, I probably, as your financial person would suggest, that once we get a more concrete knowledge perhaps of the study the town's been working on, it will help us to make a decision towards the next budget year, and that if there's any surplus remaining, we could refund, right, the reserve that we just pulled out of. Um, you could also, when you get to that discussion item, if you want redirect operational surplus from twenty twenty-one, you know.
Well, so that's where I'm potentially misunderstanding.
Although, although, no, yeah, but your project didn't kick off, you can't do it because you didn't have buildings yet, so sorry, take that back. Um, if your project had kicked off, you could probably do that, but you didn't, it hasn't kicked off yet. Dresden, Dresden had a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars of invoicing that was already completed by June thirty. They started that job in the other.
Well, I think there's another issue, I think that's if we deplete the reserves, that's tenish thousand dollars. We can't just replenish them, we have to go.
No, you vote. Yeah, you put a warrant article on to replenish.
She would be replenished because we would have to.
Correct, correct. You have to end up with surplus and have it redirected into the fund. Yeah, that would require a vote. But we'll know what our surplus is, right, for the next year that we're building.
Right.
So the town would know how much surplus we end up with coming off of, because in Normans, it's two years, right? So the surplus we end with in twenty twenty-one is the money that we would look to carry into the twenty, that'll be around, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, which we're embarking on building. So we would know, like, how much surplus we'd like to use for offset, and if it leaves behind a hundred grand, you could ask to redirect that into the reserve.
All right. Any other questions? No, okay, questions in public? No questions in the Zoom room? I see no questions.
No questions.
Okay, thank you for that update, and that ends our business requiring discussions of new business requiring action. First item up is the approval of expenditures.
Yeah, and that's bottom. You actually made the climate real.
And those are attached to the public comments, and I will, I'll get to the motion if someone wants to. Yes.
Move to approve its spend, just from June fourth, twenty twenty-one, to July twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and the amount of loan will be a hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-seven cents as presented.
Do you have seconds? Lisa? Um, all of those in favor? All right, unanimous, thank you very much. It's nice not to have to. Uh, so next item up, uh, and last one for business prior action, is what we just discussed, approval of the school board maintenance reserve fund. And, uh, there is a recommendation in there that could be read if somebody would like to make a motion. Kelly?
In accordance with, uh, twenty-four VSA from the eight of Florida, Washington State, to approve withdrawal from the school building maintenance reserve in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand dollars to fix the technology project at Mary Cross Elementary School.
Thank you. Uh, second, Lisa, and I'm actually gonna ask a quick question, I should have.
That's okay.
Should the amount be lower than one hundred and forty? Should we amend it to say up to one hundred and forty thousand? Should you need to withdraw one hundred and forty thousand dollars before we find out?
No, you can say up to if you want.
Would you entertain amendment to your motion?
I would.
Sorry, I just wanted to verify, Jamie, isn't the E-rate though reimbursement?
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely, so, well, if we pulled out the one forty, you couldn't just.
If it came in the same year, I could put the money back.
Okay. So, just to be on the safe side, I'm not sure if you don't want that.
Say up to, yeah.
Would you mind accepting it? I don't know, would you accept?
I would accept.
Would you second the acceptance?
I would second the acceptance.
All those in favor? Thank you, and, uh, that ends our business prior action this evening. We do have a need for, uh, executive session, um, at which time we will break, I think. I guess we go into that later. If there's not boxes and books all over the place. But there is, um, a motion there to enter this session. You have to, you've got to.
I'll move to the present to accept the session, according to title one, section three, one, three, for the purpose of discussing personnel.
Second by Lisa, and we will do a call to, starting with Lisa.
Kristy S.
Kelly?
Hersy S.
Neil? Oh, there is, and Kelly, yes. Um, and have voted to return to the session here tonight's meeting. Uh, our first item of business back in the public session is approval of new hires. Neil has some language language.
Um, yes, uh, move to approve the following new hires, um, yeah, Whitney as a communications facilitator, I believe that's a one that will position, my correction. Stephanie Hurst is a one-point-oh learning specialist, and Jonathan Dean is a one-point-oh second-rate teacher.
Thank you, Dan, second. Kelly, all of those in favor? Any others? Thank you, and next is, uh, leave requests. Now I can do that.
Uh, move to approve a limited leave request for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty school year for Gail Whitney as presented.
Second by Kelly, all those in favor? Thank you. Uh, and that ends our agenda items for this evening. We do have things that we're gonna need to discuss in the future, so I will inform members, administrators, and the public aware that we will likely have a special meeting coming up in the future. With that said, I'd be happy to entertain a motion to. By Kelly, second by Lisa, all those in favor? Thank you very much.